Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular monthly meeting of the Board of Commissioners held for the purpose of transacting the general business of the township. Today's date is December 11, 2019. The meeting is being held in the Springfield Township Building. Please stand and join the Board of Commissioners in a moment of silent reflection honoring the servicemen and women who placed themselves in harm's way in order to help preserve our safety at home and overseas. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting as written and recorded in the official minutebook of the township. And the motion has been made by Mr. Shum. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. We are in full complement tonight. Before we get into the public comment, I want to make an announcement because I think there's been some bad information out there. Many people have been following the girls softball situation, and there was a recommendation by the Parks and Rec Board, which we discussed on Monday night, and thank you for the people that have been coming. We did not accept that registration. We're sticking with the IC GSL, and the registration is back on the website and is live, so we're back to the way we were. So we think that that's behind us, and we're in a good position, and thank you for the input on that. The Board of Commissioners conducted an executive session meeting on December 9, 2019, as part of a regularly scheduled workshop meeting on that date to discuss one personnel matter and one litigation matter. The Board also met in executive session prior to this meeting to discuss one personnel Later on this evening, the Board of Commissioners will conduct a public hearing on a proposed zoning code amendment to create a historic resources overlay district, as well as a budget hearing on the 2020 budget. The Board will also conduct a special meeting to close out the business of 2019 and to adopt the 2020 budget. Any questions or comments related to the zoning code amendment or the budget should be held until the public hearings are conducted. So let me give you the roadmap because it's confusing. We will have four different public comments, and feel free, unless it's budget or historic ordinance related to the one that we're about to start, feel free to say what you want there. We'll have one at the beginning, one at the end, and then in the middle, this is just the way the law works. Because of the way this historic ordinance works and because of the way we passed the budget, we have to adjourn from the business meeting, move into a public hearing, which will have its own comment in it and will read a statement. These things tend to move pretty quickly. Then move back to the meeting, move into the other hearing, which will have its public comment, so it'll be a little confusing, but you can just ignore it. That said, now we come to the first public comment, and we're open to, preferably if it's a budget or historic, you should wait. The Board is now open to comments or questions from the public. The Board draws particular attention to those items listed on the agenda this evening. Please be advised that once the committee reports begin, the Board can no longer accept questions from the floor. At the conclusion of the committee reports and hearings and the special meeting, public comments will once again be accepted. However, official action on those items listed on the agenda will have already taken place. If you wish to make public comment, now would be the appropriate time.
Do we just come up or do you call?
Yes, that's fine. Just state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name's Janine DePaul Nelson, and I do appreciate what the comments you shared regarding the softball program before we got started. I do have a prepared statement that speaks more to the process as to how we got here and my concerns about the way that we had to get to this point, so I would like to read the statement, although some of it may not be exactly relevant. I provide a copy for all the Board members for the reflection. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Janine DePaul Nelson, and I have been a volunteer softball coach, serving Springfield Township for the past eight years. I am also the newly hired Springfield Township High School varsity softball coach, beginning this coming season. There are several points of concern regarding the proposal submitted for your review and the future of softball in our township that has been sent by Emily Crook that I want to address. I will try to keep this brief, but I want to give you some highlights, as I hope this will give you pause. Springfield Parks and Rec have served its children well over the past 20-plus years regarding playing softball opportunities for young girls. Mike DiMarco has been committed to this program for over two decades, along with Jim Crywiki. I've joined them for the better part of the last decade to grow and develop this program further. Initially, the program consisted of 12 U and 15 U teams. This was expanded to 10U and 8U in the 2017 year. Concurrently, there was a swell from parents to create opportunities for even younger girls, which transformed into the Springfield Little League system, serving K through 10U. These programs were never designed to compete against each other, but to provide opportunities for all kids of all ages to play the sport. Last year, these two programs existed side by side with an overlap of 10U. Just to be clear, the Springfield Little League was not created due to a void in softball options for girls over the age of nine. There was a well-established program in place. It was always intended for K to eight-year-olds and was preliminarily approved with the expectation that these girls would transition to the IC GSL when they aged out. Now, what was being proposed by Ms. Crook is that the Springfield Township Parks and Rec abscond their oversight of IC GSL and throw these teams under the purview of Springfield Little League. My main concern at this time is the seemingly disingenuous efforts of Ms. Crook to appear as if she's working with the ICGS leaders while actually manipulating information in order to make a case to remove IC GSL from her responsibilities. Her letter to you dated 12/5, which sets forth this proposal, was shared without any input from IC GSL leaders and has several falsehoods represented. Those are detailed in my handout. I'm not going to detail those now, but they're in the third page of the handout. I don't know what her motivation would be to disengage the Parks and Rec Department oversight from a program that has served these children well for so long, could be other than one less thing that she has to manage, something that she was hired to do. Make no mistake, this is not our program. This is your program. We have been in service to the township for decades, not the other way around. There is no gratitude, no appreciation of this. There is only a, "If you want this to continue, you, the volunteers, must do more, so I can do less." And as a resident, a constituent, and a coach, I find this unacceptable. As the incoming varsity head coach, I must tell you, I consider the IC GSL to be my feeder program. I have been intricately connected to the training style and the development of these players. To the best of my knowledge, there are currently 19 girls on the varsity and JV team who I have worked with personally in IC GSL. They stayed with softball and two years ago made that district run, and there's another nine coming up from the middle school. It is through the IC GSL that I was able to work with them, bond with them, and earn their trust. My appointment to the head coaching position was due in large part to the relationship and the success I've shared with these kids to date, a relationship that would end if this proposal goes forth. Over the years, I've had several girls from neighboring townships sign up for our teams because of the climate and the caliber of play that we are providing. I can provide you with those names of those out-of-district residents if you'd like those references. So it was my ask at the Board, suspend any proposal and convene your own inquiry into the situation. While I understand you want to support your employees and empower them to make decisions, I also believe that only people who have been here for years truly grasp what this program means to this community. It is my contention that this Board is the only unbiased advisory board in this equation, and that the individuals standing before me are the only ones without a personal agenda included in the point of view. As elected officials, I believe it is your responsibility to ensure that your Parks and Rec Director is not arbitrarily shedding off her responsibilities so that she was paid to undertake while selling it to you as unanimously supported by an advisory board weighed heavily aligned with one part of this equation. In your packet, I've included photos of the kids from several occasions to show you the depth of our community involvement. I thank you for your time today. I welcome the opportunity to meet with you, to provide you more vital information and insights to be considered later, and I urge you to engage in this conversation and do your due diligence to fully vet this situation and ensure a fair and equitable solution is reached, driven by what is best for the kids of this township. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And to you and all the others out here for this, thanks for all the work over the years and for the work going forward. We've got great programs here. Do we have any other public comment at this point? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Joe Cobb with Springfield Little League Softball. First off, I want to just say that we fully support whatever decision you make for the IC GSL and for the township. We are really just here to speak for an email that we got from the Commissioners about creating a 12-U program for our Little League, and I just wanted to be able to speak as to what our intentions are and maybe give a little bit of a better explanation to you, the Commissioners, of who we are and why we serve under Little League, and just to give you an understanding of why we intend to open up the 12-U program. Basically, we stood here in front of you last year just to explain, we were a group of parents that were trying to establish a league on its own because at the time, there was not softball for ages five through nine at the time. We worked with the township to do so. We created a league within the township. After examining different areas and opportunities for youth sports and for softball, we realized that Little League, and through working with FAL and OW, that Little League offers a unique experience because of the Little League tournament play. That's something that other leagues don't offer, that Little League does. So one of our main objectives was to start a league that would allow kids to have that Little League tournament play. The other thing that we feel like why Little League is strong because we have the ability to raise our own funds and the ability to get grants from Little League. It's structured to give support to a Board that can run it independently. It seemed like there was very much an unevenness about running youth sports in the township. So we decided and asked to start Little League, which you granted. The reason why we want to expand to 12U is because we were a growing league. Little League started from zero four years ago, and then after we became Little League, we grew to 140 kids. I think the one thing that I don't want to get lost is both of these programs are here to serve the kids. I think both have good intentions at heart, so I think that that can go without being said. But the reason why we wanted to start 12U is because of the growth of our league has gone to 140 kids, and there are kids now that want to stay within Little League. There are kids that have aged out of our 10U program, but they want to stay within Little League. And there are also kids that don't play, they play with private clubs, but they want to play under the Little League umbrella because they want a chance to play in that tournament. So I just wanted to explain to you that there are no other intentions other than that. So if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to stand here and answer those questions, but I just wanted to address the email that we got and explain ourselves and what our intentions were.
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Anna Paz-Lisney. I decided to come up here and talk to you today as a player. I'm a sophomore at Springfield Township High School, and I'm here to talk to you today about my journey through the IC GSL softball league. I started playing softball when I was only five. I grew up playing at the old Antonelli Fields. When I outgrew that program, I played CYO softball for one year before finding my true home in the Springfield IC GSL program. I began my time with this program when I was in the fifth grade. When I attended my first formal evaluation, I knew that this was the program for me. When I walked in, I remember being very nervous because a lot of the girls my age had already been a part of the program in the years prior. But when I walked through the door, I was greeted by the most welcoming and kind coaches. Throughout the evaluation, I felt as if I had been a part of the program since I was five. These coaches were so dedicated to their work, they even continued to coach after their own daughters had long outgrown the program. That year, I would be coached by one of the most impactful coaches in my entire life, Janine DePaul. This was my first true year of growth as a player. I learned the proper skills and techniques I needed to succeed, but most importantly, I learned how to be a part of a team. Our coaches always did whatever they could for our team, and those results showed in our high level of play. Throughout my four years in the program, my coaches pushed me to be the best player that I could be. They taught me how to play all positions and the necessary skills for each position. One year, my coach even decided that she was going to teach me how to pitch because she saw the potential in me. I spent the whole preseason learning the full breakdown of a pitch and how to execute it. It was in these moments that I looked back and realized how lucky I was to have coaches who were so knowledgeable in the game of softball that they were able to teach any kid at any skill level what they wanted to learn. I even began to make new friends from other districts who came to our program after hearing about our coaching and positive team atmosphere that was fostered by the coaches and everyone who was involved. Throughout my years, I've made many memories, including beating our rivals ardently, our Saturday morning hitting practices, and our end-of-the-year team parties. But one of my favorite traditions was carried out throughout all my years was the game ball presentation. After each game, our coach would give the game ball to one girl to honor her efforts throughout the game. The feeling of our coach recognizing all the effort we put into our play was the most confidence-building motivator. In my first two years, I not only gained a high level of confidence, but also a high level of skill. Within two years of being in the program, I tried out and made my first tournament team. I can confidently say if I never joined the Springfield IC GSL program, I would have never even heard of or tried out for a tournament team. I continued to play IC GSL until I finally aged out, and today I'm still playing tournament softball and high school softball built on the foundations of my experience in the IC GSL program. And I can count on one hand the number of players on our high school team who didn't grow up playing IC GSL softball. Today, I'm thinking about how I want the rest of my softball career to pan out. I have attended college showcases with dozens of coaches and have received positive feedback and interest from some of the coaches. After attending these showcases, one of the first people I always call is my IC GSL coach and tell her how it went. I always think of my softball supporters in order of my mom, my dad, and Janine DePaul. Janine never fails to tell me what I'm doing well and what I can work on. Without growing up in this program, I would have never been able to get where I am today as a player and a teammate. I fully credit my softball success to the Springfield IC GSL program, and I'm sure many of my other teammates over the years have their own stories about how the IC GSL program has helped them as well. I'm standing here before you today as proof of the IC GSL's program's success, and terminating this program will rob other girls who are just like me their opportunity to reach their own softball goals. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. That was very nice. Do we have any other public comment at this point?
Hello, my name is Charlotte Hartner. I'm a sophomore at Springfield Township High School, and I just recently, last season, finished my 10th and final season in year of the IC GSL program. The skills that I've learned from my coaches have enabled me to play at a higher, more competitive level. I now travel the country playing softball and even plan to travel internationally this summer. I know softball will be part of my college career. I've already started to develop a relationship with college coaches. During our winter workouts last year, Coach DiMarco asked me to help teach the younger catchers the fundamentals of catching. After a couple lessons, I realized that this wasn't going to be my last season with IC GSL, that I would come back every year for as long as I could to help the players improve. And I would be a good instructor because I learned patience from Coach DiMarco, and I learned how to be a positive role model for my coach, Janine. The wonderful thing about this program is that it allows players to be as serious as they want to be or just to have fun with their friends. All of the teams are inclusive and supportive. This program has taught me so much about being a player on and off the field. An IC GSL, the program, is an asset to our community.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any more public comment at this point? One in the back. You can both come up, but you both have to tell us who you are.
Hi, my name's Alana Dunbar, and I just wanted to say, I started off playing six years ago from Abington to Ambler to Sholtenham, but when I was at Springfield, it was a whole different story. I felt loved playing for softball. Softball for Springfield changed me. I learned handling fear, fear of losing, and even the fear of taking risks. Our coaches explained to us how we will relate to life experiences outside of softball. It is the township and community's responsibility to allow players like myself to be able to continue this experience.
My name's Ryan. My favorite coach once said, "As individuals, we're weak, but together we are strong." This community needs more people who understand what softball has done for us. Because of softball, I've not gained more friends, but I've gained a second family. I've learned that hard work pays off and that there's no I in team. This all wouldn't have been possible without Mr. DiMarco and the Springfield Township working together. This is helping me become a better leader in the community.
Do we have any other public comment at this point? Okay, we will move ahead, try and get in and out of these hearings quickly. I will start out as the Chairman of the Internal Affairs Committee. So we're on the agenda, which I lost. No, no, I have that. I just like to pull it. Not important. Start out with the bill listing. I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the November check reconciliation in the amount of $715,166.94 in the December bill listing in the amount of $1,107,445.06. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Moving on to the agency meeting schedule for next year, the 2020 meeting schedule of the Board of Commissioners and township agencies will remain substantially the same as the 2019 meeting schedule, with the exception of the Shade Tree Commission and Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The Shade Tree Commission will now meet at the Free Library of Springfield Township instead of the Township Administration Building, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee will begin their meetings at 7:00 instead of 7:30. The Board of Commissioners will continue to meet each month on the second Wednesday at 7:30, and the Monday preceding the second Wednesday at 7:00 p.m. Both meetings will take place here at the Springfield Township Administration Building. A complete list of the meeting schedule is available upon request. The meeting schedule will also be posted and advertised in the Ambler Gazette. The 2020 organization meeting, in Section 701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, requires the Board of Commissioners to organize through the election of officers and the designation of the financial institution of the township on the first Monday of January in each even-numbered year. In 2020, the first Monday in January is January 6, which also is a regularly scheduled workshop meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Therefore, the Board will meet for the purpose of organizing at 6:30. Prior to any new business by the Board, all newly or re-elected Commissioners will be administered the oath of office by District Justice Kate McGill. So what that is, we have to vote in our officers and whatnot on the first Monday of the month, and we always meet on the Monday before the second Tuesday. Well, this is one of those years where they're the same, so to make it work, we're going to start a half an hour early and we'll swear that people that are re-elected are the one new Commissioner in, and then that will empanel us, and then we'll have our normal meeting at 7:00. That's a lot of words. The Library Advisory Committee, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township reappoint Michael Bruce of Orland to new three-year term of service as member of the Springfield Township Library Advisory Committee. The new three-year term of service shall expire December 31, 2022. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Is that mine? That's why I lost it. He swiped it. Okay, got my agenda back here. So that ends my report at this point. It's not the last you've heard from me, unfortunately. That ends my report. We now move to the Chairman of the Public Works and Facilities Committee, Commissioner Shum.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the appropriate township officials to execute an employment contract with the Springfield Township Public Works Department for the years 2020 through 2023, the amendment to the existing contract or wage adjustments, the use of vacation leave, and a signing bonus. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
On behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to thank the members of the Public Works Department for their service to the township and for their willingness to work with the township on contract agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my last report.
Okay, well, we'll come back to you. We'll give a little chance for you guys to embarrass him in the final public comment.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, moving on, that takes us. I'm a little confused. You have too many things for me in front of here. That moves to the Chairman of the Community Development Committee, Commissioner Standish.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
But we'll be back to you. I've got three scripts here, but he's got the fourth one, because I didn't want to read them all. We move to the Chairman of the Cultural and Environmental Resources Committee, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a recycling report this evening, and pleased to report that during the month of November 2019, Springfield Township residents recycled 159.21 tons of material with a householder participation rate of 75.3%. The net costs for the month were $20,413.77. That concludes that report. Do you go on to the Environmental Advisory Board?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township appoint Joy Bergy of Flower Town to fill an unexpired term of service on the Springfield Township Environmental Advisory Commission. Ms. Bergy's term of service shall expire June 14, 2020. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Wow. Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Please record a unanimous vote. Hold on. Still juggling things up here. Do you have more?
I do.
Okay.
I have a resolution number 1485. I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township adopt resolution number 1485, a resolution authorizing and extending an intermunicipal agreement with other Montgomery County and Philadelphia County municipalities and wastewater treatment plant operators to advance the development of an alternative water quality improvement plan for the Wissahicken Creek watershed. It is the intent of Springfield Township to renew the intermunicipal agreement through March 31, 2021, and to appropriate up to $23,500 to provide its share of funding needed to cover the cost of the professional services associated with the plan. Springfield Township, along with all the other municipalities located within the Wissahicken Creek watershed, is mandated by the Environmental Protection Agency to perform water quality improvement activities to reduce phosphorus and sediment within the watershed. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll just say, thank you, Peter, for your hard work in going to those meetings and trying to understand this stuff. It's important for us to figure this out, possibly run.
We do think we're near the end. We have submitted our plan to the EPA. They are presently reviewing it. It's a very, very comprehensive and science-based report. We fully- We fully expect it to be acceptable, and then the important implementation part of the program will begin to take place.
Great.
And Peter, is it premature to tease what implementation might look like or might entail?
Well, basically, the broad, in the broadest sense, the plan as envisioned is going to require all the municipalities and the water treatment plants to basically reduce the sediment that ends up in the Wissahicken Creek. Initially, the science was leading to phosphorus as the main, you know.
Culprit.
Culprit in the degradation of the water quality in the Wissahicken. But after a lot of science, it became very evident that sediment is equally and probably just as important a contributor to the downgrading of the creek. Unfortunately, per the DEP and the EPA, the Wissahicken is no longer a high-quality stream. It's very much impaired. So we believe that this program, if fully implemented, and this is, we're talking about, you know, 20, 30, 40 years of work here to truly clean the stream up, you know, and the plan that we have put forth, if accepted, will basically allow us to do that. But it's going to come at significant costs to all the municipalities and the water treatment plants that are contributing to it right now, so.
Thank you. And a comment on the context. What got this started was we were under a federal edict to do some really major things to improve the water quality that were prohibitively expensive. So we were able to get the EPA to agree that, let's look further at the science and figure out exactly what the problems are, and engineer something that deals those problems that's more affordable and with a better outcome. And that's what this group has been working on doing, and that's, we're finishing that.
For three years.
Yes. Any other comments? We haven't voted on it yet, I don't think, have we?
No.
Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And my last item is a, basically, just an announcement here. Beginning in 2020, Springfield Township will begin collecting leaf waste on a year-round basis as part of the weekly curbside collection program. Leaf waste is defined as leaves, garden residuals, shrubs, tree trimmings, and similar materials, but not including grass clippings. Please place all leaf waste in biodegradable paper bags and place them at the curb for collection on your regular refuge and recycling day. All residents are asked to practice grass recycling by mulching and grass clippings, of mulching and grass clippings, and allowing them to decompose in place. Grass clippings are a beneficial fertilizer for your lawn and will reduce the amount of waste that the township must pay to dispose of. If you must bag your grass clippings, please place them in a plastic bag or refuge can for disposal. So that is my announcement.
Okay, and does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And the reason we're sticklers on the grass is we have limited space and the grass doesn't biodegrade fast enough, so you sort of gunk up the whole process. That's the backstory on that. But it's great that we're moving this to year-round. That should help. In order to avoid a slander suit, I need to correct myself. The solicitor did not steal my agenda. It was at the bottom of my pile. My apologies, sir. We now move on to the Chairman of the Parks and Recreation Resources Committee, Commissioner Graham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Graham. We move on to the Co-Chairman of the Public Safety Committee, Commissioner Maxwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. One item this evening pertaining to Trumbauer Drive parking prohibition. And this is going to be two motions, because we have to repeal one before we can accept the other. First, I move that the Board of Commissioners amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-35, Schedule 12, special-purpose parking zones by repealing the parking-by-permit regulations on the north side of Trumbauer Drive from Cheltenham Avenue to a point 308 feet westerly thereof. That is my motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
One comment, and what this is, is this is the road into the Stottsbury townhomes. People have parked on both sides because it's allowed for people that live there. There's a permitted situation, and causes dangerous bottlenecks both for the first responders and for the residents. So we're now just limiting the partner, parking to the left side as you come in on the south side. So that's repealing the parking by permit. And any other comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And then this will put in the no parking. Go ahead.
Next, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township amend the Springfield Township Code, Section 107-32, Schedule 9. Parking prohibited by prohibiting parking on the north side of Trumbauer Drive from Cheltenham Avenue to a point 300 feet westerly thereof. That is my motion.
Does it 308 feet?
308 feet, yeah. What did I say?
300. You said eight now, okay.
Should drop the.
I know.
Sorry.
We'll have some smart guy parking in those last eight feet and not getting tickets.[995.54][995.54](LAUGHTER). Okay, for 308, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
And just as the President stated, the above parking modifications are intended to improve access to the Stottsbury Townhome community by emergency and motor vehicles. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Commissioner Maxwell. We move to the Chairman of the Zoning Committee, Commissioner Cobb.
Mr. President, first, I'll announce that there is no zoning hearing board meeting for December, as no petitions were received by November 29 filing deadline. The next meeting of the zoning hearing board is scheduled to be held on Monday, January 27, at 7:00 p.m. in this building. Second, I move that the Board of Commissioners of Springfield Township reappoint Ed Fox of Orland to a new three-year term of service as a member of the Springfield Zoning, Springfield Township Zoning Hearing Board. The new three-year term of service shall expire on December 31, 2022.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote.
Thank you, and that's my, that's my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cobb. We are now going to move into a public hearing on the zoning, the zoning amendment. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from our meeting and to, can I do them together? And to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please record a unanimous vote. So now we're in the hearing, and because you're getting sick of me and you're going to hear a lot more of me, I'm going to have Commissioner Standish read the announcements. You're up. All right, well, there we go. So, purpose of the hearing, the public hearing is being held in compliance with Section 609 of the Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code to consider zoning code text amendment to create a new zoning district entitled Historic Resource Overlay District. It's also in the Springfield Township Code by creating a new Chapter 46 entitled Historic Sources. The legal requirements associated with the public hearings have been met by publishing a notice of the public hearing in the November 24 and December 1, 2019 issue of the Ambler Gazette. In addition, public hearing notices were posted in the Township Building and Library. Copies of the full text ordinance were available in the Township Building, the Library, the offices of Montgomery Publishing, and the Montgomery County Law Library. So in summary, the ordinance entitled Historic Resource Overlay District Ordinance amends Chapter 114 of the zoning code by adding a new article, which is 12D, Roman numeral 12D, entitled Historic Resource Overlay District Setting forth Legal Authorization, Legislative Intent, Role of the Historic Commission Regarding the Historical Resources Inventory, Permitted Uses, Requirements for Special Exception Approval in the Bulk Area and Setback Requirements, and further amends Chapter 114 of zoning, Article 2, Definitions, Section 114-21, Definition of Terms, to add certain definitions related thereto, and furthermore, and further amends the code of Springfield Township to add a new Chapter 46 entitled Historic Resources setting forth the establishment and authority of the Historic Commission, the criteria for historical resource designation, the historic resource inventory, procedure to prior to, procedure prior to demolition of identified historic resources, and procedures applicable to violations, penalties, and enforcement, and further amends the official zoning map of Springfield Township to include all properties within the Township in the Historic Resource Overlay District. The ordinance provides for properties and structures to be designated as historic resources only at the request of the landowner. So, the, the planning commission reviews have been, Springfield Township Planning Commission, in a letter dated October 23, 2019, it was noted that the Township Planning Commission discussed the proposed ordinance at their meeting of October 15, 2019, and voted unanimously to recommend enactment of the Historic Resource Overlay District Ordinance. And through the Montgomery County Planning Commission, undercover letter of November 29, 2019, the Montgomery County Planning Commission provided a review of the ordinance. The county suggested that the proposed ordinance is consistent with the Montgomery County Comprehensive Plan, which recommends the preservation of important historic properties, creation of historic resource surveys, and adoption of historic preservation ordinances that offer use and other bonuses for preserving historic properties. So I'm now going to turn the procedural comments back over to Jeff. Thank you, Commissioner Standish. At this point, we are open to any questions or testimony from the Board. I have one comment, just trying, try to give the three-sentence version of what this is. This allows you, if you live in an historically significant house, it allows you to be more flexible with the zoning, to try and make that house more attractive financially. In exchange for that, you are, have a higher obligation to maintain the outside look of the house and not to tear down the house, so that you trade off more flexibility with home offices and what you can do with the house, but you would get back, you would, in return for that, not be able to change the outside of the house or to tear it down without going through a lot more hoops. So that's kind of the basic premise. It doesn't, it's an opt-in program, so if you live in an older house, you don't have to do it. You can decide whether you want to do it. That's the shortest version I can give. Are there any questions or testimony from the Board at this point?
I'd just make, just a couple of comments. And just from a historical perspective, we started doing this, you know, I've been either part of the planning commission liaison for a long time, and we got into this, I think it was 15 years ago, and it, we put a lot of work into it, and it sort of didn't go anywhere, but it looked a lot different. It was a lot more of a restrictive kind of an ordinance, and I think this is a better, a better ordinance. We kicked this off, again, I think about three or four years ago, and we've put a lot of work into this. And I just want to call out a few people. On our Board, Bob Kettowski has been the Chairman of our Board, and he's put a lot of time and effort.
The Planning Commission.
In our Planning Commission, that's right. And I particularly want to call out Mandy Helwig, who was the Chairman of our Subcommittee, who met for many, many nights prior to our Planning Commission meetings to work this all out. I also see in our audience Lorie Solgonikoff, who is, runs the Chestethill Conservancy, has spent a lot of time and effort on this and has really done a great job at connecting us with the state of Pennsylvania and, you know, making things easy for us. And Scott Crallit, who is from the Chestethill, or I'm sorry, the Springfield Township Historic Society, has also provided a lot of leadership. So, those are my comments.
Great, thank you.
I have a procedural question.
Go ahead.
So if I own a very big historic, or any kind of historic house, and I decide I want to put it on the registry, and so time goes on, and I decide I'm now going to sell my house, does the next buyer have to accept it, or does it have to?
That goes with the house, doesn't it?
There's also a process for renewal from designation.
Okay.
But you have to go through that process.
So they would, it would default to being part of it?
So, so when the house is listed, it would be listed with the caveat, historic, part of the historic preservation ordinance?
Our hope, and we don't know, is that this would actually increase the value of the house. Could you be able to be selling? People shouldn't be buying these old houses if they're not ready for a bit of a money pit. I know, I live in one of them. It's a wonderful thing, it's a great honor, but it's not cheap. And that it should be something that increases the value because it's acknowledgement that it's significant. But we don't know how the market, because there is a burden with that. But that's, from a public policy, the answer is, the answer is, they would inherit it. Yes, they would inherit it, and then I think that's a good public policy thing, because we want people to buy the house that want to, want to help it. You know, if it pushes the needle that way a little bit, that's good.
And Jeff, can I ask another procedural?
Yes.
So I don't have a large old house, but I have a post-war house that maybe Mick Jagger stayed in for a night when the Rolling Stones were in town 40 years ago.
You wish.[1593.54][1593.54](LAUGHTER).
Could I get my house on the historical registry?
What's the standard?
There's a process for listing.
Yeah, there's a process for a listing, yes, you can, you can.
And the Historic Resources Advisory Committee would weigh in on that.
Take into account.
Yeah, so basically, the Historic Committee is going to come up with their own list, but if you decide for some reason that you have a historic house.
Somebody Mike Richter's house, we could.
You could petition, you could petition the Committee, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Mike Richter's house, yeah.
So, okay, are there any other comments from the Board? At this point, we're open to any questions or testimony from the audience. There being none, we, what we are now going to do is I will entertain, there's going to be more of this ledger domain here, entertain a motion to close the public hearing related to the Historic Resource Overlay District and reconvene the business meeting. Does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Now, so we've reopened at this point.
See, you can vote it.
I know, I'm going to, oh, here it is. Yes, here it is. It's hidden in the program. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 962, the Historic Resource Overlay District Ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, now.
Long time coming.
Yes.
Long time coming, right?
As we can all exhale for a minute. This is a great red letter. It's still a lot of work to go, but it's, that's the biggest hurdle we've just cleared. Now I would accept a motion to convene a public hearing on the 2020 budget. Do we, do we need to close the meeting? First, I would accept a motion to close the December 2019 business meeting. Do we have such a motion? Do it together, okay, I'm going to remake that, like I did before. I'm going to accept a motion to close the December business meeting and to convene a public hearing on the 2020 budget.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, now we are in the budget hearing. I've got to read another statement here. This hearing is being held in compliance with Section 1701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code as last amended. The sole purpose of the budget hearing is for the Board of Commissioners to receive public comment on the 2020 preliminary budget. The legal requirements associated with the budget hearing have been met by publishing a budget notice in the Ambler Gazette issues of November 17 and 24, 2019, and making the budget available for public view and the, and public review in the Township Building and the Library Building. The 2020 preliminary budget of Springfield Township is $17,442,290. The proposed real estate rate is 4.441 mils, an earned income tax rate of 1.01%. The proposed real estate rate is 404.441 mils, an earned income tax rate of 1.0%, with an annual refuse service fee of $227.79. At this point, we are open to any testimony from the public on the budget. Do we have any? There being none, we will move forward. All testimony taken at this budget hearing will be considered by the Board of Commissioners. A special meeting is scheduled, that means like in 30 seconds, to close the business of 2019 and adopt the 2020 budget of Springfield Township. So now, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing on the 2020 budget and to convene the 2020 budget adoption meeting to close the business affairs of the township for 2019 and to adopt the 2020 budget. So that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we're getting there. Now I got to fumble around again. Now I just make these motions, right?
Yeah, here, you can rip them right off.
Right, now I got them. We're almost done. And we've accepted the public comment, right? So we don't need to do that again. Although we will have public comment at the end. So I have four, four motions to make here. The first one has to do with the Flower Town Country Club lease. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1486, a resolution setting forth the reconciliation of the 2019 rental income and expenses of the Flower Town Country Club and authorizing the transfer of net receipts of $61,373.25 from the Township General Fund to the Township Capital Reserve Fund. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And that, that is basically just a bookkeeping matter. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. The next one is number 1487. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution 1487, reconciling the 2019 expenditures that may be over expended with unencumbered balances of certain expenditure items and revenues received in excess of budgetary projections. The general fund actual expenses of $14,134,037.52 were reconciled with the unencumbered balance of expenditures of $1,651,114.48. The budgeted expenses for 2019 were $15,785,152. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And what that is, is since we adopt a budget that's line item, you know, some are over and some are under, and that's just letting us net that out. Again, it's, it's a bookkeeping matter. That's, that's the current year's budget. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Now the next one, which is the actual budget part of it, I move that the Board of Commissioners enact ordinance number 963, setting the 2020 real estate tax of 4.441 mils, and that expenses of the township for 2020 are appropriated from revenues as set forth in a table attached to and made a part of ordinance number 963. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And the, we've been through this a lot over the last couple of months. That is the same rate, so there is no change in the tax rate. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. And finally, we're just going to set the refuse fee. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt Resolution Number 1488, a resolution setting the 2020 refuse service fee of $227.79 for each residential dwelling unit. That is my motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And what's the, how much is that?
About a $9.
$9, it's $227, and it's about a $9.
You moved.
And that's the full rate. You'll get a 2% discount in two months of the season.
Yes, yes. Any other comment? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, please record a unanimous vote. I think we've covered everything, and we are now open to our final public comment. Don, why don't you let Lori go first?
Thanks, Don.
You sit down.
Hello, I'm Lori Salganikoff from the Chestnut Hill Conservancy. We are a nonprofit that works to preserve the open space and historic character of the, of this area, basically the neighborhoods in Chestnut Hill and adjacent to Chestnut Hill. And I just want to say thank you very much for, for what you've just done. It's wonderful. Very delighted to see that Springfield Township has joined other townships in Montgomery County and across the nation, actually, to protect its, its heritage. So, well done, and, and thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Lori.
Scott Crallit, President of Springfield Township Historical Society. And I'll just add my, my second to what Lori has said. Thank you to all of you for considering the preservation ordinance and adopting it tonight. It has been a long road. I was, I was there quite a few years ago as well, and it's taken a long time. We've lost a couple of great properties along the way. We don't know for sure that they would have been saved by having this ordinance, but it would have made people think twice about taking the actions that they did. So going forward, hopefully this will prevent that and keep a few more properties with us for a long time to come. So thank you again for adopting the ordinance tonight.
Thank you. And thank you to both of you for your passion and expertise along the way. It's been very helpful. Okay, Don, you're allowed to come up here now.
Don Seriani, Crest Road, Orland, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight to recognize and commend Commissioner Glenn Shum on his many years of service at Springfield Township as a commissioner, including his term as president of the board, too. As a fellow volunteer firefighter, Glenn, for over 45 years, I've worked with him as a fire company officer and on the fire line, where he's shown his dedication and unselfish service to the community at any hour of the day and sometimes in hazardous situations. He has always represented the best interests of our emergency services and made them better. Through my position with the Public Works Department and having Glenn, having the Public Works portfolio, I've seen, he, I've, he has shown me a keen interest in the needs of our department and did what it took to, whatever it took to get a minor issue resolved or a large project completed. And Glenn has traveled with me around the township on numerous occasions during emergency conditions and in severe weather events. Most recently, on the night of Halloween, we had that windstorm come through. He spent over two hours with me in the middle of the night assisting assessment of damage around the township and helping the residents as needed. And the other Public Works employees always appreciated seeing him in these late hours, showing that he's cared and he was out there, and they were not out there alone. He requested, he would ask questions to learn about public works concerns and problems that we're up against, and he always looked to make things better. And finally, as a resident of Orland and a citizen of Springfield Township, I want to heartily thank you, Glenn, for all the time, effort, and energy you put forth for all the residents of this township, be it deliberating about a difficult issue, where you have always taken a very practical approach, or making sure things like Community Day after months of planning went off without a problem. You've truly made this a first-class township. So Glenn, thank you for all you've done, and I know you will continue to do and follow through with this, as you've always deeply care about the well-being of all of us. So thank you for the best interest of all the residents, and thank you for making life the best it can be here in Springfield Township. Thank you very much, Glenn.
Do we have any other public comment at this point? I would like to add on to that. Glenn, you've been my wingman here for 14 years, and it's been a lot easier having him, him up here. Yeah, I'm a newbie here. You're just, the advice, the experience, your demeanor, your institutional knowledge, and really your wisdom on how to solve these things. Many times you've slipped me notes or whispered things. You did it on, you did it on Monday, requesting a letter when we were trying to figure out simple solutions that none of us saw, has made this run better and helped our credibility and, and made, most importantly, the difficult times a lot less difficult. You know, because you're just a class act up here, and we will really miss you.
Thank you.
So thank you for that, and thank you for not just that little 14 years of service, but all the stuff before, and hopefully all the things you'll continue to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At that point, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to...
I'd like to make one more.
Okay, go ahead.
For Glenn, I've only got to sit on this board with you for four years.
Phew.
And I want to thank you for allowing me to join you on the Public Safety Chair for the last four years. I also want to thank you as a Public Works employee for being so dedicated to the men of that department. That is, one of the departments is truly a thankless job, and as Don can attest to, long days and nights are few and often. I also want to thank you for truly being a genuine person. When I was first elected to this board, we got to sit down, have breakfast, talk, get to know each other better. And that gesture there, I, I gained a lot of respect for you. I've gained a lot more respect over the years sitting next to you. I'm definitely going to miss the comments and questions that I have to get a better, different opinion on things, and there's definitely going to be a little bit of a void up here with you being gone. And also want to thank you for 22 years of service to this township. It means a lot to residents like me who've been here only 17 years, but to know somebody like you has put forth a lot of the effort that you have to make this community better, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before you close the meeting, if I may.
Yes.
I would just like to thank the board. I've enjoyed, I'm honored to be here, I must say. It's been 20, when I look in the mirror and say it's 22 years, I'm looking like, what? It really cannot be that long. From a younger guy, I wouldn't say young guy, but from a younger guy 22 years ago, the perspective of how things have changed in our township, it, it's very interesting to watch the change evolve. And the only thing I'll ask of the younger commissioners, not 14 years, that's a long time, is you need to look at this township, township through the lens of the entire township and not through the viewpoint of each individual community. Because we are maybe not unique, but we do have seven wards, and we tend to get tied up trying to do the best for our ward and sometimes lose sight of what is best for the entire township. And that would be my only advice to anybody that's newer than 22 years. It's been an honor and a pleasure. Public Works, as Don was so kind to come up and make those comments. You know, I, I never got to drive the loader. I always wanted to drive the loader. I did learn what B2B mod, or, B2B, what is that base, right, Don? Yes, so?
Gift exerciser.
So, it's been an honor and a pleasure, and I thank everybody, and I appreciate all the support everybody's given me on the board. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Okay, at that, I'd be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Please record a unanimous vote. Okay, now we are in the budget hearing. I've got to read another statement here. This hearing is being held in compliance with Section 1701 of the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code as last amended. The sole purpose of the budget hearing is for the Board of Commissioners to receive public comment on the 2020 preliminary budget. The legal requirements associated with the budget hearing have been met by publishing a budget notice in the Ambler Gazette issues of November 17 and 24, 2019, and making the budget available for public view and the, and public review in the Township Building and the Library Building. The 2020 preliminary budget of Springfield Township is $17,442,290. The proposed real estate rate is 404.441 mils, an earned income tax rate of 1.0%, with an annual refuse service fee of $227.79. At this point, we are open to any testimony from the public on the budget. Do we have any? There being none, we will move forward. All testimony taken at this budget hearing will be considered by the Board of Commissioners. A special meeting is scheduled, that means like in 30 seconds, to close the business of 2019 and adopt the 2020 budget of Springfield Township. So now, I would accept a motion to close the public hearing on the 2020 budget and to convene the 2020 budget adoption meeting to close the business affairs of the township